I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
James Pearson.
Yes.
Anna Isabel Dos Reyes Cuto. Anna is absent.
Yes.
Amanda Carlo is absent. John Cambio. Bradford Mayor.
Here.
Dorothy Jacquevoni.
Here.
Cody Rydel.
Here.
Amy Anzalone.
Here.
And is there a motion to, actually, before we go into executive session, if no one objects, I'd like to take the agenda a little bit out of order. If we could go to item, I think it's four C, the introduction of the staff accountant for discussion. Everyone's okay with that? The way he doesn't have to wait for us to get through with executive session before we get through. Mrs. Anzalone, would you like to take it away?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thanks. I appreciate being up here with all of you tonight. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our new staff accountant, Michael Salito. Michael was an account, junior accountant at Navigant Credit Union for three years prior to joining us. He handled mainly accounts payable, daily items and journal entries while he was at Navigant. We are very excited to have him. He's been here for about three weeks as our new staff accountant. When I sat and met with him the other day, he said to me, it's kind of a whole new field for him and lots of learning for him, but he's making the adjustment and certainly enjoying working with the finance department. And I know the finance department is happy to have him as well. He, I asked him what his reasons for wanting to get into school finance were, and he said to me, he wanted to move out of banking and that he has some experience in his family in terms of school finance. His dad is a superintendent. So his dad gave him some advice about getting into school finance and he'd like to just keep moving forward in his career in that area. So Mike, we're happy to have you.
Anything you want to say? If you do, you can step up to the podium. Any comments or questions from members of the committee? Remember Jacquevoni?
Welcome. Just wondering, do you have any experience in grant writing or are you be willing to explore writing grants to get funds?
I do not have experience with grants, but Chris did mention I would be working a lot closely with the grant process. So that will be definitely an item on my agenda.
I think in addition to the writing, which we definitely need, I think there's also an aspect of it that he'll be supporting where you have to monitor how the grant funds are being spent and make sure that's all the paperwork is in order for that, because then you have to report that back to whoever issued the grant and how the money's being used. Any other comments or questions? Remember Mayor?
I just want to say welcome to the team.
Any other comments or questions? I'll echo the same thing. Welcome aboard. Glad to see that our finance department is getting staffed appropriately. As you know, Coventry's had some challenges in the past that we're finally getting ahead of and hope this is a long, successful career for us. Thank you. And that said, is there a motion now to go into executive session at 6:05 PM?
I make a motion that the committee recess into executive session at 6:05 PM to consider matters specifically relating to student matters, RIGL 42465A8, homeschool requests, approval of executive session minutes from September 11th, 2025, where the following items were discussed, student matters, homeschool requests, RIGL 42465A8, and approval of executive session minutes from August 14th, 2025, and review of school crisis emergency plans, RIGL 42465A3.
All in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion carries five to zero. We're in executive session. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the open session at 6:21 PM. Could everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Aye.
You remain standing for a moment of silence? Thank you. Next item is, actually, Assistant Superintendent Anzalone, could you provide the safety notifications for the meeting?
Yes. If you have an emergency, you can go out this door and turn to the left and head towards the front. And I don't believe that one's locked. I think it was locked. Go out that door and out the back through that office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Member Rydel, could you honor us with a reading of the mission statement?
The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. Next item is executive session report. In executive session, two votes were taken, the first to approve homeschool requests, the second to approve executive session minutes of September 11th, 2025, both passed unanimously. Is there a motion to seal the records of executive session?
I make a motion that the records of executive session be kept closed pursuant to sections 42464 and 42465.
Second?
All in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes for September 11th, 2025. Any comments, questions on the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes from September 11th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 11th, 2025.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is citizens' comments for topics listed on the agenda. If anyone gathered here today would like to speak, please step up to the podium, state your first and last name for the record. I have note takers of the room. We have two people on Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak during citizens' comments, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. Going once, twice, three times. I love having a screen here now. I can, I don't have to crane my neck to see if anyone raises their hand. Alright, note takers for citizens' comments so that it's closed. We can move on to next item, which is AP test results presentation for discussion. Would like to start.
So I'd like to introduce our principal at Coventry High School, Mrs. Brooke Maycumber. Coventry High School has had a successful tradition on the number of AP classes that they offer, increasing participation, and also their scores. And I'm proud to introduce Ms. Maycumber.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So this, if you were on the committee last year, you heard a very similar presentation, very similar format, but what we've done is just updated it with some data from this year. Just to review what exactly an advanced placement course is, these are basically college-level courses that we offer at the high school level. They reflect what is being taught in the colleges. And so they're all, the curriculum is standard for all schools teaching this. It's through College Board, and so all of our teachers, all teachers across the country and the, and the world, because these are given everywhere, are following the same curriculum. Students at the end of the course take an AP exam. We have the exam we, month of May, so we schedule the exams at that point. And so it's a really busy month, especially for kids who are taking multiple courses. And so they take the exam in May and their scores come out in the beginning of July. And it's like the first week of July, and I mean, we're, we're up at the crack of dawn waiting for these scores to be posted. The teachers take a lot of pride in, in the work that they've done. And so we're all, you know, we all eagerly wait for the scores to come out in July. If you receive a score of a three or higher, so you can score anywhere from a one to so you can score anywhere from a one to a five, five being the highest. But if you score a three or higher, you have passed the AP exam. And you, basically that translates to college credit in most schools. So some schools, especially schools like the Ivy League schools or the real high, top-notch schools do, do require a higher score than a three. So typically a four or a five is all they'll accept in order to give the college credits. But most schools, when we look around our state, most schools in our state accept a three or higher. So basically that means they've earned the college credit while they've been in high school. So some of the benefits, really just the skills that kids develop through these. You know, they analyze a lot of documents, close readings. They're, they're reading at a very high level in many of these classes. Some of the advanced math classes are really, really tough and require a lot of extra work. I know we've been very grateful that we've been able to offer the Calc II class over the last couple of years. And that has helped kids so much in terms of even just colleges that they're getting into just by taking that course. We had a student, first time in, in school history, get into MIT last year. She was part of that cohort that went through and did all of the AP math classes that we offer, including Calc II. And she did get a five on the Calc II AP test. Kids use this to boost their GPA. It is a weighted GPA when they take an AP course. This helps kids be able to go through college faster. So some kids map out, and we do it with guidance, and we do it with, you know, when they meet with our guidance council, they map out how they're going to get as many AP courses in their high school schedule and so that they can potentially skip a year of college or even more. So some kids are graduating from the high school with 11 or 12 AP courses under their belt. And that's, that's getting them out of school an extra year early. So you can think about the amount of money that they're saving and, you know, just being able to move quickly through college. So that's awesome. And a lot of schools base their, base financial aid on this. It's merit-based financial aid. Some of the colleges are looking at this to put you in honors programs. So this gives kids a leg up when they get to college. These are the offerings that we had, we have at the high school currently. This is what we offer. Most are taught with a, with a classroom instructor. There are a couple of AP courses that the numbers are just way too low to, to have an instructor. So we do an online program with them. And we do try to send someone in to support them. So environmental science is one of those courses. What we do with the students or students, I think we have two this year, is that they will go to the Calc II class and they will be in the classroom working on their environmental science online. But they're able to get some support from the teacher as well who's in there because the numbers in the Calc II class are pretty low that he is able to help some kids out there. So those are the courses that we have. And we're always looking to add new courses and things that are of interest to a variety of kids. Like last year, we added art. And, you know, we're looking at adding art history, African-American studies. So we want to make sure that we make this accessible for all kids, regardless of the interests that they have. So, so for the seventh year in a row, we were thrilled when we got our scores back that we've outperformed both the state and global averages on the AP exams. So this, this past year, we had 144 students participate in the program. And out of those 144, there were 302 exams given. More than half of the AP courses saw 100% pass rate, which is amazing. That is so hard to do. And I'll show you a chart in a minute where you can see compared to the state and the world that that doesn't happen everywhere. So we've been really focusing on growing this program because it's, it's, it's fantastic. We want to give kids as many opportunities as we can. So I, I just put this in there to show how our numbers have gone, consistently gone up. Although from, from 2024 to 2025, we did see a decline. But we also saw that our enrollment went down about 100 kids in, in that span of time as well. So there were 10 less, or sorry, nine less exams taken there. Nine less kids, sorry. They, same with the number of exams. They did go down a little bit in 2025. But the number, but if you look at those numbers for the kids with the three or higher, you can see that actually more of a percentage are getting higher, passing the tests. And so those are, those are the percentages there. And if we go to the next one, again, just in terms of the overall pass rate, the high scores, this is something we really are proud of. Again, some schools will not accept anything less than the four. So that's something we definitely want to focus on. The number of courses and subjects that we're offering has gone up. And just the average score in each course continues to increase. Again, total number of exams, just a little more data for you, very similar there. This is the chart I was telling you about that compares CHS to the State of Rhode Island. And so, you know, you can, you can see right there just how successful the program is. And we don't limit which kids take these. We, we want kids to take them. I have students in my office a lot. And, you know, I'll look at their schedules and I'll say, you know what? I really think you should challenge yourself next year and, and try an AP course. And a lot of them think like, I'll never be able to do it. But they definitely can. And so that it's, it's this constant push to at least get them to try one. And then, you know, if they try that their junior year and have success, then they're gaining that confidence. And then we know they're really college-ready when they go through this. Again, just the increase in fours and fives, that's really hard to see. It's like, I feel like I'm taking an eye test right now. And, and it's like my own eye test, I'm going to fail it. But again, the increase in the fours and the fives in, in many subject areas. It's, it's such a, it's, kids, when they're involved in the AP program, it's like this little family, you know? And everyone has this like mission to, the, the mission is to pass these tests, to learn this material. And so when we get to that May test time, you know, the kids all come in in, in T-shirts for their classes. So they, they each design their T-shirt, they wear it, they're so proud of it. So they, they meet together in the morning of a test. They make sure they have their pictures done. There are groups that have gone out on field trips. On the, one on the bottom in the gondola, that's the AP Italian class in Providence. They went for an afternoon. Kelly Aronakis and I go out delivering lawn signs to her kids who pass the exam. She's been doing that for several years. I am going to try to expand that to all teachers. It is in the summer though, so it's kind of hard to get everyone to do it. But it's such a great thing to go out and celebrate them. So, you know, it's just the, the constant celebrations and just, just kind of the camaraderie that it creates is awesome. And I put this in here because, you know, we, we have, we have an amazing career and technical center in our school. And I think like we are very well-known for that. And, and that is talked about all over the state and definitely within our town. But this is such an important piece that we need people to know. We are a serious academic school as well. And this is just a slide of college acceptances from last year. These kids are getting into the most amazing schools in the country. They can compete with any kids in the state. So, you know, we, we, we want people to know you can get anywhere from Coventry High School. So if you want to go into a career, we'll get you into a career program and work on that, whatever your interests are. Or if you want to go to college and you're really serious, you know, we're going to get you there as well. So I think that's just a really important piece and something that we need to keep promoting in this town so, so people get that message. And I think our AP program definitely has contributed to this, the college acceptances that we're seeing. So that's basically it. We're super proud of our kids, our teachers.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any comments or questions, members of the committee? Member Jack voting.
And did I hear you say they could take as many as they want every year? If it allows in their?
As long as it fits in their schedule, yes. We do question them though, because they're really stressful courses. So we, we also don't want to see kids completely stressed out with them. But we have kids who take five, six. It's basically six is the most they can fit in. Although, you know, some want to work in morning phys ed so they can fit an extra one in their schedule. But they're, they're very stressful. But, you know, if, if they want to do it, they can do it. And we'll find a way for them to do it. Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Member Camille.
Thank you, Ms. Maycumber, for this incredible news. I believe it was Mr. Chase last year spoke to us. And one of the things he said was that kids respond to challenge. They want to be challenged. You know, it seems like the culture over the last 10 or 15 or 20 years has just lowered standards so that everybody can pass or everybody can get a trophy. But it seems like in this program, you're challenging kids and the results are incredible.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not just skating by. I mean, these kids are doing great work, it looks like to me.
Yeah, they are. And, and like I said, we, we don't limit who goes into them.
Right.
And we will talk to all kids of all levels, like go in and try it. I said, this was one of the best things that had happened to my son was he took an AP class in his senior year. And it, it helped him so much. Like it, it's not just about the content. It's about the skills and the study habits and everything else that comes out of it. But more than that too, the confidence that kids gain, that they know they can do it. So, you know, regardless of where they're at, we, we do try to encourage it. And, and we don't care. Like if you don't pass the test, it's okay. You know, you'll get a lot out of that course. So we're, we don't try to limit who takes them. But our teachers are fabulous who work in this program. And we've had many of the same teachers stay as the AP teachers over, you know, the last seven years. So they know the curriculum well, they know what's working. You know, we have, you know, the district has been very committed to training teachers to teach these courses. It's, it is a little different than, than just teaching a regular high school course. We have some computer programs and platforms that we use that are really helpful as well. So, but yeah, I agree, it's, it's definitely raised the bar.
Yeah, held up.
Yeah.
I remember when I was 12 years old, my drum teacher told me that I needed to audition for the Rhode Island Youth Philharmonic Orchestra. And I said, forget about it, there's no way, you know? And then a neighbor had been over a house and she said, if your teacher said you should have, you should try, you should try. And so I did, and I got on, and I spent one year there. And to this day, right now, I'll never forget that year. We practiced all year long for one concert. And my appreciation for, for symphony music is, is, is just so much more than. I would have never even experienced that. So I, I'm really grateful.
We have to give kids exposure to these things and, and, and challenge them, yeah. And they do rise to it.
They rise to it.
And, and when they're there, they're all working together. Like I said, it's like a family, they do push each other. They take a lot of pride in what the whole class's score is. Like those 100% of kids passing in a course, that's huge. Every student there has contributed to that. So that is awesome.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Member Mayor.
Are these courses typically for like juniors and seniors?
Yes, although sophomores, the, the APUSH class, the history, the US History class, we do start in the sophomore year. Some of the math courses can also start in sophomore year. So students can take like AP Statistics in sophomore year and double up in math. We added pre-calc last year. So we're actually starting to see a couple of sophomores ready to take AP pre-calc in 10th grade. But predominantly they're in 11th and 12th grade.
And if like, if an incoming eighth grader like looks at these and say, I want to take these junior and senior year, they can like talk to guidance counselors before they start to see what classes that you take leading up to it and stuff like that?
Yeah, what would be good prerequisites to take a course? A lot of kids who are very interested in AP and are going to get on that track for like the, you know, 10, 11 AP classes, they're mapping it out probably in eighth grade. They're already looking at it, which is, it's great. We don't want to stress them out though. But, you know, there is some planning that goes into it and some prerequisite work that they definitely need. They do a lot of work over the summer also. So if they are registered to take an AP course, they do have summer work, the summer before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'll just say thank you very much for the presentation. It's very important that the committee sees the results of, of these testing and the improvements that we're making, but also for the community. I'm already getting questions from council members, believe it or not, asking, oh, how do we, how are you planning to improve test scores? And I think the AP component is a, is a big piece of the puzzle to that of how, again, we are challenging students and pushing them to do better, so.
And one of the questions we always get is who's, who are the kids taking that? And we know that a lot of kids who love school, who want to go on to college are taking it. But like I said, we're also seeing kids who, you know, are challenging themselves doing this for the first time. And that's, those are the kids we're really pushing into this now because we want to challenge them. Then when they go to do the SAT and they're taking it at a higher math level, you know, than maybe if they were just taking a regular high school course.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Moving on to the next agenda item, school calendar update for Senior Defense Day, discussion and vote.
Yes, so we'd like to propose to change the calendar on May 5th for the high school only and change it to a half-day for the Senior Defense Day. This is a day when, after the 9th, 10th, and 11th graders leave, the seniors meet for 10 or 15 minutes each with a panel of three teachers and put their presentation on display for them. And the, they're rated at the end of that 10 or 15 minutes. And then they're told whether or not their presentation has passed or not, which is part of the vision of the graduate where they present their portfolio to a group of teachers. If they were not successful, it also gives them time to revise and then present again to staff members before graduation. But it is one of the graduation requirements. And we do this every year. The high school puts together a, a great day of kind of spiraling students through these presentations with staff members getting good feedback. And we want to put this on the calendar again for May 5th, if possible.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Member Mayor.
Is it, has it always been a half-day for the rest of the school?
Yeah, so last year, we, we did it on a professional development day. So where the rest of the district was participating in professional development in the afternoon, the high school was doing their Senior Defense Day. This year, we have cut the number of professional development days for teachers down to three. So we needed to put this Senior Defense Day on a separate day. So it is, it is just a half-day and we were able to get it done. I, I spoke with Principal Maycumber today and she told me that they are able to get the majority of the seniors done. Some do it a little bit sooner, but the majority of the seniors do present on that half-day.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the calendar update?
Make a motion to approve the school calendar update for Senior Defense Day.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next item is the Coventry High School Handbook Updates for Discussion and Vote.
So I know Mr. Pearson and Mr. Mayor are part of the Policy Subcommittee and had conversations about adjusting this handbook at the last meeting. So feel free to jump in here at all, at it at all times. In the past, Um, in the past, uh, ninth graders, um, took exams, final exams, no matter what their, uh, score was at the end, their average was at the end of the year. Um, but in an effort to get students to put forth their best effort on state assessments, um, Coventry High School wants to change their handbook to incentivize exclusion from final exams for those students that are enrolled in like full year courses like math, English, um, social studies. They're proposing that the ninth graders still take all their exams, both their midterms and their finals. Uh, they are proposing that their 10th graders, um, instead of just getting a 92.5 average or higher in the class, um, they're proposing now to have the proficiency in math and ELA on PSATs weigh in to that. So the student in 10th grade would need to show proficiency in ELA and math on their PSATs, have a 92.5 average, um, or higher in the particular class, and then fewer than 10% unexcused absences in that class. So that's the proposal for 10th grade. For 11th grade, the same proposal, except instead of PSATs, they would use the SATs. And again, um, I spoke with Donna Bowden today, uh, the Guidance Counselor, the head of the Guidance Department, and she said that the scores come in sometime in May, which is early enough both in PSATs and SATs for us to be able to determine which students, um, have met those requirements in the 10th and 11th grade. And then in 12th grade, um, it's not, uh, any test in particular, like any state assessment, but just their average in that class and then fewer than 10% unexcused absences in the class with an additional incentive for 12th graders that if they meet the criteria or are proficient in state test scores in science, math and ELA, that they would be exempt from all finals, including semester courses. Right now, they take semester courses for final exams for sure. Um, and they are hoping to exempt seniors from those semesters if they're proficient in science, math and ELA. Anything I need to add? Snaycomber, did I say those?
Just one correction. This is going to be the first year that all freshmen have to take exams because they, they did have exam exemptions prior. But we were seeing that we need kids to take exams and learn how to take exams. And so your freshman year, everyone will be taking them regardless of the grade that they have in, in the class. Um, so that hasn't happened before. That, that is new.
Thank you.
And the other thing just to point out is the science scores, they don't come in until, um, after, um, like they, they come towards the end of the summer, they're, they're reporting out. So we can't include that with the junior exam exemption, which is why we wanted to give something to put some teeth in the, in the science testing as well. We truly believe that if kids felt they needed to do well on these SATs, they would do better. Um, a lot of students don't read these scores for their next step. If they're going to CCRIs, let's say they don't really need to submit anything. Or if they're applying to schools that are test optional, they don't have to submit SAT scores. So to get them to really give their best effort on them, we need something to, to make it worthwhile for them.
And they're required, and they're required to take them because of, there are.
For it's a state requirement that they sit for the test. Um, so we know that they can do better on these tests. I know they can. And, you know, like you said, um, this person like we need to, what are we doing to try to raise test scores? We need kids to take them seriously. So this gives them an incentive to do that.
I think it's a great idea.
And also helps us with attendance also. Because it is very easy to stay home and, and, you know, in some ways kids are looking at Google Classroom and they're still staying up on work, but they're missing out on discussions and the, and the things that you really learn being part of the classroom. So we need kids to be in school more. So we're looking at this as a way to help improve our attendance rate as well.
Terrific. I think that's clear. Any questions on this part of the handbook update? All right. And there's a second piece, uh, that we're planning to update on the handbook, on dress code. Well, we got to talk about both sections first.
So the second area of the handbook that the high school is, um, proposing to change is on page 10, under disruptive attire and appearance. And the letter A under there and that section, they're not choosing to change, but they've added B, C and D. Um, would you like me to read them or do you feel comfortable that you?
I don't think we have to read them all.
Great.
Any, uh, questions about the addition of, of the disruptive attire addition of B, C and D? And I would like to say this is proactive, but it is a little bit reactive. So this will help, I think, our administration deal with some, some things that were a little unclear in the handbook and, and how to handle them. And it, this makes it more clear, um, I hope. All right. If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve the Coventry High School Handbook Update?
Mr. Pearson, I have just one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Camby. Go ahead.
I didn't go ahead of time. So these are the only updates in the handbook?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve the CHS Handbook Updates.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. Next item on the agenda is, um, kind of a companion piece to updating the handbook. It was also, uh, felt appropriate to update the Student Dress Code JICA policy for first reading and discussion invoked. So the only cha, I'll, I'll talk to this because it's simple enough. The only change that the Policy Subcommittee, meaning, uh, Subcommittee pushed forward was mirroring the language change in the handbook and adding the, the additional sections, uh, related to disruptive attire. And that said, is there any questions about the policy change? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the first reading? They make a motion to approve the Student Dress Code JICA First Reading. Is there a second? No second? Any further discussion? There are questions on the policy. Now is the time to ask and we can bring it back to the subject. All right. Seeing no questions, uh, all in favor? I missed one. Member Jack Voight.
So this is, I don't know who to ask, maybe, or could, do you ever have, like, someone wears something and the school thinks it's appropriate, but they don't? And then there's a battle of what is appropriate, what's not, what's something written on a shirt that's bad? And someone else says it's not or some, you know, like difference of opinions and fashion statements? Is there any, do you ever get anything like that?
The only thing that we've seen as a, it's like the cloth costume, face paint that kids are coming in. Um, so that was one of the, you know, professors, pretty disruptive when you're coming in and looking like you're dressed for Halloween in a costume. We used to have in the handbook that kids could wear costumes, um, but the face paint, um, was definitely.
Any reason for the costumes or? Okay.
Want to be disruptive. But I would say anything else.
Like you've never had anything challenged? Was like a T-shirt maybe with the slogan on it or, you know what I'm saying? I?
We haven't. I mean, I, I can't think of a specific instance. Most kids know when they're kind of pushing it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can't come up with an example.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions about the dress code policy? All right. Um, the motion was, uh, made and seconded, uh, all in favor? All right. Chair votes aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries, uh, four to one. And welcome, Member Dosrez Kuto. No problem. You made it just in time for citizens' comments. But it's okay. We understand you had other obligations. That is fine. Thank you for letting me know. Appreciate that. So that is the next agenda item, citizens' comments. If anyone gathered here today would like to speak during citizens' comments, please step up to the podium, say your first and last name for the record. And I have no takers in the room and we're back to two people on Zoom again. Uh, if anyone on Zoom would like to speak during citizens' comments, raise your hand and wait to be called on. Going once, twice, three times. And citizens' comments is closed. Almost a record meeting. Uh, next item is scheduling of the next meeting.
When he returns about this record meeting time. What do you think?
Maybe. No, I can't do that because the agendas will start getting shorter. We'll miss something. Uh, is there a motion to schedule the next meeting for October 23rd? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, at the high school, yes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And finally, is there a motion to adjourn at 6:57 PM?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:55 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, everyone.